Call to order the July 25th, 2023 Meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. All right, we'll do roll. I'll call roll. So we have Chris. Sean. John. Gemma. I am here. Peter is not here. He's not at the meeting today. Jean is on vacation but is gracing us with her presence momentarily, I believe. There you go. Jean can hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you so much for taking time out of your vacation. I'll make sure the town manager adds that on for your vacation time. All right, continued public here in Zero Turnpike Street, Middleton Farms LLC, continued until August 15th. 189 Willow Street, Vincent Grasso, request to continue until August 15th. Both of those will be continued until August 15th, 2023. Discussion item 47 Bonnie Lane, Limin Kong, unauthorized tree clearing within the watershed protesting district non-disturbance buffer zone. Jean, why don't you tell us where we're at and then we'll hear from someone on behalf of the applicant or on behalf of the homeowner, I should say.
So this has been carried on the agenda for a few meetings now. What we were waiting for was what was required in the enforcement order that was issued by the Conservation Commission, and that was an existing condition plan, a restoration plan, and a tree appraisal performed by an arborist. So I can't see in the room right now, but Thor Akerly from Williams &amp; Sparages should be there to present these plans. And Howard Gaffin is the arborist that I believe is attending tonight as well.
Okay, they're both here. They both raised their hands, so why don't we hear from them?
Jean, should I put the plan on easel somewhere for the public viewing, or is that all set?
Yeah, you can, you can do that. Yeah, why don't you do that because I don't think we have a way to, we're not going to be displaying it, I don't think unless... Yeah, if you don't mind, Andrew. Because I just need mine to run the meeting.
If Thor has a laptop, he can plug the HDMI in as well?
I don't.
I think Andrew's able to pull up the... Yeah, go get it, sir. Okay.
It should be, it's linked on the agenda?
Yep. I mean, I have it here if you want on my laptop, too. What are you looking to pull up?
No, I just need a second.
Okay. Thor, go ahead. Why don't you just start telling us where we're at, what we're doing, and what we're looking at?
Sure, absolutely. So Thor Akerly, wetland scientist and registered sanitarian from Williams &amp; Sparages, tonight representing the property owners of 47 Bonnie Lane. As you know, Limin and her family recently purchased the property in North Andover, and approximately 27 live trees were cut within the non-disturbance zone to Lake Kichiwic. And tonight, we're pleased to present you with a proposed restoration plan for the tree cutting, which includes a number of native tree species, shrubs. We've also presented the board with a tree appraisal prepared by Howard Gaffin, who's sitting here in the audience as well. You know, that appraisal, of course, you know, is something unique to me. Being a wetland scientist, not to Howard, of course, you know, and that really, you know, it is an alarming number to look at, of course, if you've looked at the appraisal, you know, and that number takes into account, and Howard can explain it better than I can when the time comes, but that report takes into account the cost to replicate, you know, create an exact replica of a tree that was cut in the vicinity. It's not the value of, you know, the functions of it that it provides, the wetlands or the lake, you know, it's literally how much does it cost to plant, to maintain, to grow a tree of that exact replica. So here's our restoration plan. This is an existing conditions plan that we prepared for the property. We conducted our survey in early June, I believe. I was out to identify the wetland resource areas shortly before that. On the left-hand side of the plan, we show a table. Each number on the left identifies the species of the tree as well as the species and the diameter, breast height of the tree. Those numbers correspond to the location shown on the plan there of the tree stumps that were cut. And in Howard's report, he uses the same identifiers. He helped us match things up. And so his report goes into a little more detail on the health of each of these trees and, you know, shows his process for converting the cut diameter of the tree to the diameter of breast height. Using that information, he was able to create the appraisal for the cut trees and come up with an estimate for the cost to replicate the tree. And that cost is a number of things, including the cost to maintain it over time and to actually install the planting. So you can see there's things included in there which don't necessarily, you and I might equate to the value of a tree. But anyway, the restoration plan, you know, we're happy to show you, includes 43 native tree species. The tree key, tree species key is on the right-hand side of the drawing. It calls out the caliper or size of the trees and the species. We tried to match the species to what species were cut in the area. So we have a greater than one-to-one ratio here, and we tried to use, you know, use up the area that was cut. We did add additional shrubs, high bush blueberry, silky dogwood, which can grow to be, you know, fair-sized, especially the dogwood. These both provide a lot of native food for birds and some great habitat as well and are pretty common pieces of our restoration plans. We do go into a little detail on to the methodology. You know, these, I don't want to get into too much, to bore you too much, but the stumps that are beyond or on the inside of the erosion controls, these are all proposed to be removed, replaced with clean fill, clean soil, and the sandy loam variety. Any disturbed areas would be seeded, and then these plantings installed under the supervision of myself or an arborist like Howard, and then over the next, you know, two years, they would be monitored. And this area would be, you know, hand-removed with invasive species to make sure they're set up for survival for the long term, not just plant them and run. You know, that's generally the standard for, let's say, wetland replication area, which is more of my, you know, area of expertise. You know, you monitor the site for two years. Everything gets well-established, and, you know, you can kind of let it grow from there. So I believe that summarizes things, you know, fairly well from a high level. At this point, we are planning to present this plan to the Conservation Commission tomorrow. And at the next, by the next filing deadline, which I believe is in a few days, we'll be submitting an after-the-fact watershed special permit for the unauthorized tree cutting. And, you know, we'll be in front of you again at your next Planning Board meeting, I believe is the plan, to go through that process.
Okay, so why don't we hear from the arborist about how he came up with this, and then we'll go to questions and comments from the board? Why don't you come up?
Yeah, I just understand.
That's fine. We can.
All right, so your appraisal was based on the, I can't think of the... You guys presented them a form that gave a scope of what you wanted to have done. And within that scope, the way you said that you wanted to appraise the trees was the way I did it. What would be a replacement cost for this large tree?
Can you stand in front of the microphone?
Okay. Can you hear me? Is that okay now? Oh, all right, I'm sorry. So basically, what you start with, as Thor alluded to, was what kind of tree is it? And then you figure out the species and the size of the tree. From there, you go and figure out what the replacement tree is going to be. And whenever you can, you would go with the same species of tree. I mean, here, most of these trees were native and readily available, so that wasn't a problem to replace them with the same species. So the way this appraisal that I do is based on a guide that is presented by a Plant Appraisal Council. It's made up of a bunch of professional organizations. It is a guide. There are different ways to appraise the trees. But as I stated, I went by the way you guys asked me to appraise it, or whoever wrote those recommendations. So from the way you start is you find the locally available, the largest locally available tree from nurseries of that species. For instance, maybe you find, you have a red oak, so you look at some nurseries, and you find that there's several nurseries that have red oaks for, say, three-inch caliper. So that would be your base tree, from which you're going to derive a basic unit price for the tree. In this case, what you do is you take the diameter of the tree, and then you figure out this amount of square inches in a cross-cut section of that. For instance, a three-inch tree would be something like eight inches, cubic inches, in a cross-section. Then you find out how much is that three-inch tree to buy. Say it's $100. Say there's 10 inches of cubic inches of area, yeah, square inches of area. So you would take $100 divided by 10, so each cubic inch would be worth $10. And that's how you derive a basic price for the tree. And from there, you extrapolate. So for instance, I have a 100-inch tree instead of a 10-inch tree. If I have 100 inches, it's times 10, comes to $1,000. So that's how you get the price for that large tree, for starters. That's the first thing you do. Then there's a series of deductions you make for the tree, based in three different parameters. The first one is the condition of the tree. Does it have any defects? What's its form? Is there a lot of dead wood in it? Is it misshapen? In this case, obviously, the trees weren't there, so what is, what I was able to do is look at the surrounding forests, which are all of similar species. I was able to look at some digital imagery from Google and other sources to see what it looked like beforehand. And of course, I could identify the trees from the stumps. So the first, what you do is, again, there's a series of deductions that you would take after you figure out what the basic cost for this large tree is, figuring this is a perfect tree in the perfect spot. So from there, the first is the condition, and judging from the trees around it and the condition of the stumps, I think most of them were in the 70% to 80% range. So you would deduct for that. In other words, if it was $100, you would use a multiplying factor of .7. That $100 tree becomes $70. The next process for a deduction is called, yeah, there's basic limitations. There's external limitations and functional limitations. Functional limitations would be things such as, is there a building there? Are there wires above you? Is there a fence there? Is there a driveway there that keeps the roots from growing too large? So you would take that into consideration as well. In this particular case, because they're growing in a natural area, there simply were no functional limitations. So the deduction for all that, all those trees in there would be zero. There is no deduction. The third factor you use for deduction is called external limitations. And those might be such things as perhaps a height limitation if there was solar, or again, if there was a utility clearance growing, or perhaps there was an invasive, there was an insect in the area that was devastating, like perhaps the Emerald Dashboard that you may know of that's here. In this case, again, for most of those trees, except for one ash tree, there were no external limitations. There was nothing limiting these trees from being there. So basically, again, there's three columns of deduction you would use. First one is for the condition of the tree. Second one is for the functional limitations. Third one is for external limitations. And again, in this particular case, there were no external or functional limitations for these trees. So after you get that number, again, if I had a $100 tree, the condition was 80, now I have an $80 tree. To that, you add how much it costs to plant that tree, how much it costs to maintain that tree for a certain amount of years, and how much it might cost for, say, an arborist or somebody like Thor to come on occasion to monitor the site. So that's also figured into there, and that is how I arrived at the numbers that you see.
Okay, that was very educational. Thank you. Okay, so why don't we do this? I do have, I did, since Peter couldn't make the meeting, I did talk to him ahead of time, and while he is very valuable on many topics in front of the board, especially in the lake area and wetlands, I'll have some comments to share from him and that he and I discussed. But if anyone else has questions or comments first, I'd be happy to take any other questions or comments.
One question is, it's one-for-one replacement? Is that, is that what you said?
It's greater than one to, 43 trees for 27 cut, plus the number of shrubs. I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay.
Yep, so greater.
Thank you.
Okay, so one of the things that Peter mentioned and that I agree with is that one of the, I think we need a little more specificity. So when we come to a permit, we're going to want it to be specific as to what is going to be planted and what our expectation is, because I understand why in the report you can't always say exactly, okay, if you're looking for a tree that's one to two inches in diameter, how tall exactly it's going to be. But what we've seen in the past is when we're told most range, so this is, from the report says, proposed trees are larger in size compared to a typical restoration plan, with most ranging from one to two inches in diameter. This would generally correlate to a 10 to 14-tall tree at the time of planting. What we don't want to see is agree with those general statements, and then the actual trees come in smaller than that because they, those are what was available, or just it happened to be that these one, these one-inch ones happen to be eight feet tall. So what we're going to want is, so, you know, 10 to 14 feet, that's, I think, you know, from my position and talking with Peter, who's pretty well-versed in this, that's going to be okay, I think, in front of our board, but it's going to have to be, the permit's going to say 10 to 14 feet. They're not generally going to be 10 to 14 feet, not likely to be 10 to 14 feet, not likely one to two, but actually, that's what actually needs to be planted. The same thing is with, you know, some notes were made in there that there were some shrubs, I think, and you mentioned that were starting to grow back, and some rejuvenation, some saplings. That's all great, but none of those are going to get counted as part of your 43 trees. You can't say, okay, well, this sapling started to grow, and I see it's coming, and eventually it's going to be a 15-foot tree. That's wonderful. We hope those come in. They're not going to count towards what our thing is. So those are good, that's good. But when we ultimately, if we ultimately issue a permit for this, what we want to see is this plan and these trees, if they're going, at 10 to 14, they're going to have to be 10 to 14. So if you get one that's two inches diameter, but it's only nine, we're not going to, we're not going to count it, okay? Other than that, it seems like a pretty robust and pretty workable plan that, that, you know, and it will take work. That's the other thing. It seems to me that it will, it will take work over the next couple of years to make sure that this actually comes in, and we will be monitoring that over two years and expecting reports. I would expect interim reports and then a final report. And if it takes longer, it takes longer. But after two years, we're not just going to say, okay, 12 came, you know, you know, we're going to expect it to actually happen. So I think it's a really good start. But when we come to permitting, we're going to be specific that these trees be 10 to 14 feet tall. Jean, anything else you think we need to discuss?
Nope, I don't think so.
John, go, or John, Sean? Move closer to the mic, though.
The existing trees that were cut, what was the typical diameter circumference? I don't care, whatever, but what are we talking about, sort of on average?
I didn't calculate an average, but, you know, generally, I would say they range from 10 inches at breast height. It looks like, you know, on average, probably to around 20, 18 to 20. So they're, you know, they're mature trees.
They're mature, and in general, are we talking 50, 100 feet tall? I mean, you know, give...
60 feet.
60 feet. I'm just trying to get a ballpark. So we're taking, and I understand there's a difference between mature trees and trees that are planted, but just so I'm clear, we're taking trees where we, the existing trees are 10 to 20 inches in diameter and 60 feet tall roughly, and we're replacing with trees that are two-inch in diameter and 10 feet tall, correct? I mean, that's, that's what we're talking about here. The, how long does it take for a 10-foot tree to get to be like 25 feet?
They're going to grow depending on the situation. I'm going to just interject here just a little bit.
Come on up, come back up.
I'm going to interject just a little bit, and this is just my opinion. I wouldn't get too hung up on the height. Trees are sold by caliper. I would say that what Thor said, you're going to find them roughly within that height. And if you want to specify that height, that's fine. That might just mean you have to get some calipers bigger than the other to meet a height requirement. But rather than a height requirement, I'd rather see you be more adamant about the caliper of the tree. The other thing I just want to make note of is that, as you said, the trees that are there are really important. The little saplings that are coming up, they're going to grow way faster than anything you plant. They will outgrow them. They've already got a well-established root system. They've been waiting to grow. Now that these larger trees have been removed, they are going to take off. So to answer your question, there's different types of species there. The red maple is probably the fastest-growing. I would say the white oak is probably the slowest. So to get to a size, if you were asking me, you know, in height, I would say a tree can grow from, the maple may be a foot a year to a foot and a half. The oak, more like six inches to a foot. But what you're really looking for here more is, you know, you cannot replace what these trees have. You simply can't. What you're going to try to do is replace en masse what you've, you know, in numbers, what you've lost en masse. So originally, a lot of these younger trees will come up, and they'll be tight together. But they'll be growing, they'll be doing things, they'll be taking care of the soil, and you might have to actually consider managing those for a little while as you're also managing the trees that you plant. Because those trees, like I said, in reality, they will likely outgrow the trees that you plant. And the bigger tree you plant, the longer it takes to get established. So.
But no, thank you. I appreciate that. I'm no expert in this area.
No, okay.
So I'm just, I'm just trying to get a little bit of context. One related question to that, and this is more hypothetical, and I get the difference between mature trees and new trees, okay? So is, like you're talking about, we're talking two-inch caliber trees, that seems to be sort of the norm, I suppose. Can you get a tree of a caliper of four or five inches? I mean, do they exist?
If you want to spend the money, you can get a tree 10 caliber, 10 inches or better. But as I, as I stated, two things with the problem, especially, you know, I don't want to get too far ahead of myself, but especially in a property where there are things growing back. If you try to come in with, plant a big tree with a big root ball, you're going to disturb everything that's there. So it just makes no sense to do that.
No, fair enough.
The smaller the tree, the better.
Yeah, okay, that's fair. And when you say saplings, these aren't like off of the existing tree where it's...
Oh, those are all, these are all from, well, okay, there's two different kinds. Basically, the red maple is a tree that will do something that's called coppicing. And what that means, if it, the stump is smaller than 12 inches, after you cut it, it will throw out several stumps, and these things will grow exorbitantly two feet a year because the, because the root system is already there. So that's another consideration that, you know, like there are stumps there, there, the red maple that are that size. I wouldn't remove them. I'd leave them and let them sprout. The other thing is, all those trees that are there that I'm talking about are from seed. And there's actually, the forest is in a process of evolving. So a lot of the trees that are in there, the smaller ones are actually hickory trees, which is a little more down the succession road. So, you know, it, like I said, well, the good thing about Limin's property is that it is full of these smaller trees. You know, they haven't been cut down or mowed down. So it's got some good regeneration possibilities there.
Okay, good, okay. But one last question. You talked about, you know, the ratio replication. And I've often thought that the Conservation Commission always wanted a two-for-one replication. But I mean, what do you typically see as the best practice?
Well, you know, there's no rule, there's no, every situation is different. And, you know, that's why, like I said, in this situation, the best practice to me is to go with what's there. What can I encourage that's already there? And there are already, like I said, a lot of saplings and a lot of the ground cover plants, the small plants, the blueberries, there's a lot of hammamillus witch hazel. They're already there. So, you know, that's what you want to do, is not disturb that. But as, as far as trying to replace, you know, a large tree, like I said, you can't, you just can't do it. All you can do is, is create a situation where you make it so that a new one can grow as quickly as possible.
Okay, good. I have a question to you. You said it's 43 trees plus, how many plants are we talking about on top of that?
So there were 26 shrubs in addition to the 43 trees. Yep.
Yeah, just a quick question. Could you just, let me just give us a top line on what the maintenance plan would be once the trees are planted and kind of the oversight and then duration of that oversight?
Yeah, so we proposed a two-year monitoring period. When we do wetland replication areas, that's typically the timeline that you would look and monitor them. You know, most often during that period, we would be removing invasive species by hand. We would be monitoring the growth of the planted species, watering as needed, you know, and just making sure they're comfortable and growing. You know, that's typically what would be involved on our end, but Howard can elaborate if I missed anything, too.
Yeah, I mean, ideally, it's like you said, it might be another year or so, actually, of time. The problem, one of the problems that's going to be in these areas that get opened like this is some invasive plants, like bittersweet, if you're aware of that, can come in really rapidly and overtake that in no time at all. It loves a sunny environment, as does poison ivy, which is already there. It's not, it's a native plant, but no one likes it. So, you know, if you ask me what I thought an actual situation would look like, I would say, you know... say, you know, for when, once the trees are planted, you're probably gonna wanna make sure either the homeowner or somebody comes in and waters them at least once a week. If not, you can get these watering bags that you would put on each tree and just make sure they stayed full, and they would slowly seep into the soil. And then you're probably, I would say, three to four times during a growing season, for the first two growing seasons, you're gonna need a crew of guys to come in, probably spend a day or two grubbing out any kind of invasive species, any things that are perhaps competing with the new plants, and maybe, like I said, thinning out some of the younger plants that are coming up, the younger trees, giving some of them more of a chance to do a little bit better without the competition. So that's what it would look like for the first two or three years. And then after that, if things are established, things should start to take care of themselves.
Great. Super helpful.
And so, oh, go ahead, no, go ahead.
So I'm just wondering if you can give a little bit more detail, I'm not sure which of you would be the best to address this to, on sort of how the plan specifically is protecting the watershed, both in terms of what you're actually planting and the layout of it, but also in terms of the installation of the trees. I'm imagining if you're bringing equipment in there and you don't wanna, you know, lead to more erosion, and then also the management over time and how that's specifically considering the water quality and the watershed itself.
Yeah, I'm happy to, happy to answer that. So, you know, these trees obviously provide a number of benefits to the environment. You know, most notably, they're purifying water, absorbing water, and creating a stable environment surrounding the lake, right? So you have a bank that's being held together by root systems of these trees, shrubs, you know, and so the replanting and regrowth of this area will restabilize the area. You know, I didn't see anything that was, you know, crazily out of line. If you removed the stumps, you may have had a lot more erosion. You know, so this area over time will become better established, more stabilized, you know, and then it will improve the water quality slightly, you know, not really in a noticeable sense to you or I, but, you know, the more, the more root growth you have, the more purification of water, the more absorption of water, again, the more control of erosion, you know, in general, right? A vegetated, you've never seen flooding in a vegetated, in a woodland area or a vegetated site. It just doesn't really happen. It's from hardened surfaces or areas that are devoid of vegetation. So those are some of the benefits that, you know, this site will endure and will begin to show over time. You know, and then the maintenance, of course, is going to be important to making sure that the area becomes well-established, grows in well, you know, as Howard discussed, you know, and critical to ensuring the long-term success of this area and, you know, its reestablishment with native vegetation.
As far as equipment in there, for, as long as you're going with trees of the size that we're talking about, inch and a half, two inches, you won't really need any big equipment there. The only thing you may need is for some stump grinding and rather, the stumps should be ground rather than removed. Trying to pull them with an excavator would make a huge mess. So you just wanna kind of grind them below grade good enough, and you can do that with a small enough self-propelled machine. So there's no real concern of having to have big equipment in there.
So I like, Sean, I liked your question about the management plan. I would like there to be, as part of your, if you can, as part of your filing, but definitely as part of our conditions, I'd like, and I especially liked Mr. Gaffin's plan and how he outlined it. So I'd like that to be part of any filing, that there be that management plan so we can make that a condition and that we can, I don't know, Gene, if we have anyone in particular to review that, I mean, I don't know if we have anyone else. I mean, it all sounded like it makes sense to me, but I don't know if there's anyone on Concom or if Amy can review that, just to make sure we're not missing anything.
So, so Ethan, one comment, I think, I don't know if we've put this as a condition, but I guess over the observation period, whether it's, I guess, two to three years, is that, I guess, scenario of what if, what if a tree doesn't take within that duration? Like, is it just, is another like tree replanted, you know, in, in that, in that window? I guess.
Well, I don't know. I mean, it's a good question. I don't know that we can be, I don't know that we can predict that because it may depend. Because if one of, let's say you plant, you know, tree here, tree here, and one of the saplings grows, you know, really grows well here, are we gonna say you have to put one right here when there's already a tree there? I mean, it may depend on how the whole breadth of the growth and how it's looking and things like that. So what we may just have to do is have, like, you know, a year in, bring us an interim report telling us how, you planted forty-three trees, how many of them are thriving, how many are surviving, how many did not die, what are our surroundings? And therefore, do we have to make any changes? But I don't know that we can put in anything specific.
Yeah, I mean, you wanna put in a reasonable condition, like we always do, that if the screening proves not to be adequate, that it has to be replaced. But I mean, you know, you wanna do that with a light hand, I think. It's fair.
So I think, I think we can, I think we can craft it to make sure, right? You don't want to plant forty-three trees and thirty of them don't work, then obviously you didn't do what you needed to do. But I don't think, you know, if you planted forty-three and forty-two survive and then you have the whole, and we have a giant, beautiful-looking forest, I don't think we have to worry about it. So I, I think we'll, we'll have to find that balance.
Yep.
Okay. All right. So you guys are on to Concom tomorrow and then back with us in August. Okay? Thank you very much. I think that was very helpful. So let's, so we'll move on to fifty-nine. Bonnie Lane?
So one thing that differentiates fifty-nine is it wasn't necessarily clear cut. It was selective cutting. And what was added to the packet late this afternoon was a photo from the lakeside. So if you, if you take a look at that, you'll see that it's certainly not a clear-cut situation. And visibility from the lakeside is a wooded shoreline.
I have images of that kind of stuff in my report.
Okay, so, well, why don't we just hear about, why don't we hear the restoration plan for fifty-nine?
Sure. Thor, a clearly wetland scientist and registered sanitarian with Williamson Spirages, representing the property owner, Matthew Markzak. Again, similar to forty-seven, we have a new property owner who came from out of state, wasn't aware of local regulations, and of course, unfortunate happenings ensued. You know, similar, we, a very similar timeline to forty-seven. You know, we presented you with a plan here that, that highlights the restoration work. Again, the key is on the right side. And I guess the key difference here between the properties, as Gene alluded to, you know, is that we do have a pretty significant existing vegetative cover. We do show the location, not necessarily, not necessarily the canopy size or the size of the existing trees, which, you know, in retrospect, we could have, could have helped potentially understand the area a little better. But you can see that a lot of those existing trees, you know, do cover a pretty significant area of the site. In total, nineteen mature trees were cut on the site. Again, those are identified on the left-hand side of the plan, diameter, breast height, species, and those correspond to the, to the number there on the left-hand side. You know, we did, we didn't go as heavy on the plantings here. We have nineteen trees with the addition of shrubs. You know, and our goal, you know, here was to help fill in the gaps. There wasn't much land disturbance either. You know, there is still a good ground cover here, minus some areas that are relatively open and barren that have been for quite some time, according to the property owner. But so our goal really is to help close up that canopy, plant things in the open areas of the canopy where we know it'll get a lot of sunlight and grow and thrive. You know, and of course, you know, these will come back, the area will, will regrow. You know, things are still pretty well-established in there and, and the site will be monitored, you know, for, you know, the time determined. And we will, you know, be submitting a more clear operation and maintenance plan, you know, ongoing into the future. But very similar, a plan here, similar species. And we did have a few extra swamp white oaks. This area was a little bit lower in elevation compared to the neighbors. They had a little more area next to the, to the wetland. So we did try to incorporate a few additional wetland species there, like the swamp white oak. But yeah, that's, that's the general, general guideline here. The appraisal did come in quite a bit lower, so there were less trees. But Howard's here to discuss that, and I'm happy to answer any other questions. Oh, and I should mention, too, that the dock has been removed, that I think the board has discussed before, you know, along the lake. So that's been, that's been removed by a professional.
Okay, so I don't think we need to go through the whole process of how we got here again, so that's good. So I think some of the same comments we had from before is, you know, we'll, we'll definitely want specific, specificity when we come to a permit and a permit application. We'll want the management plan. You know, we'll come up with some conditions to ensure that, as well as for monitoring and reporting. So it looks, this is a one-to-one replacement for trees and then the addition of shrubs? Is that fair? Okay. All right. Additional questions, comments?
Just, I, just, I'm, you know, kind of a threshold question, and I, I get in an overall understanding that this is, you know, there was relatively less cutting than the other one, but the number's the same. So what's, what's the difference? You said there was nineteen in the other one and there's nineteen on this one.
There was twenty, twenty-seven on the other.
Oh, twenty-seven. And is, is that the difference or were there just more trees on this property?
There were, there were more trees on the other, and there was a little more disturbance of the ground. There was some machinery on forty-seven as well.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And I think what I understood is, like, one of them was more tree, this one was more tree here, tree here, tree here. So it seems you replace one for one, where the other was like more just a group of trees, where you have to, where you, then you have to put in a lot more to cover that. So where, if I'm right, is that this one was more selective, was like at that tree and that tree and that, cause there were more trees there. So that it seems easier to replicate with a smaller amount of trees when you can just put one in where, near where the other one was, where it was a whole bigger clearing, you have to kind of put, it seems.
Okay.
That's, that's how, that's how I understood it.
Yeah, okay. That's what I was trying to get at, just a little bit of context.
Yeah, and we tried to add the existing trees in there on the plan. I know we, they're not, you know, generally correspond to the actual canopy size, but you can see on there, we have the existing tree locations, which help, help paint a picture of the site a little better.
Well, what I will say is that I appreciate that both homeowners have, from what I can tell, taken this very seriously, that they feel remorseful about, you know, the mistakes and that they're hiring people that know what they're doing and that they're, have expertise and are trying to actively fix the problem, whereas sometimes we've had people come in and either shrug it off or, or hire people that were not necessarily experts, and then that, that just doesn't help the situation. So I appreciate the steps that people are taking to deal with the issues. So, okay. So Gene, same situation, go into Concom and then we'll come back to us for and after the filing?
Yep, so if they file on the intended date, the public hearing would open August twenty-ninth. And I believe that gives them two sessions with Conservation Commission. So hopefully that review is, is complete by the time you guys get it and then can add your conditions.
Okay. That makes sense. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, you wanna say there? You can, you can be Gene for the day. Are you auditioning for this? No? I don't know, sure? All right. Gene'll go on vacation more often. All right, MBTA 3A communities. How do we wanna do this? Andrew, want to, Gene, wanna?
So I'll just kick it off. So this agenda item is a result of the joint meeting that was held with the Select Board a couple weeks ago. The takeaway from that meeting was we had kind of narrowed our focus down to three specific locations or general areas to potentially zone for the 3A compliance. The board asked us to, to look a little bit broader at the town, and the board seemed to have some preference to other areas of town potentially. And so it was kind of just an open discussion for you guys to weigh in and, you know, maybe we can, as you raise different areas, kind of speak to how we evaluated those as well.
Good. So I wasn't at the meeting. I'm glad everyone else was able to attend and contribute and, and from what I'm told, it was a very, a very good, robust discussion. Could you just talk a little bit about the planning departments along with your consultants and how you came to kind of the three areas that you focused on at the, at the joint meeting?
Sure. So the spirit of the legislation is to allow for multifamily housing by right. And that housing ideally would be located in commercial areas, like a downtown that is pedestrian-friendly, walkability, access to public transportation is, is really important, and access to commercial areas. And so the areas that we had identified, not in any particular order, but we felt that there's potential that Market Basket eventually could be redeveloped, may have, it's a commercial zone today, it's zoned commercially, they have permitted uses there today. It's certainly on the Lawrence line, which has access to commercial areas in Lawrence as well as North Andover. The bus route for the Regional Transit Authority runs to Market Basket today for all the surrounding communities as well. And so it aligns with our master plan strategies. There's a few that that aligns with. So that was one of them. Another one was in the downtown area, specifically along Sutton Street from the four ninety-five interchange up to about Bueno Bistro. We'll call it Bueno Bistro site and across the street. And again, the idea is we have public transportation that runs a route along Main Street, is a commercial area. We envision improved trail access, a redefined streetscape along Main Street and pedestrian activity. The last one that we, again, looked at in a lot of detail is Osford Landing, which already was owned for a forty-hour type development, which envisioned multifamily housing. It's along Route one twenty-five. We envisioned that a bus route will be established due to the Amazon development. And that bus route potentially will run to the Lawrence McGovern Station. It, it's not as dense a commercial area. We hope that eventually one twenty-five will become a denser commercial area once we have more employment along the route. And there's always been a potential for a commuter rail station there. We actually have funded for a study to be done in the near future that will look at that site and kind of evaluate potential ability for that. And again, it aligns with some master plan strategies. That being said, you know, overall, what legislation is calling for is a minimum of fifty acres of area that potentially could have multifamily by right, twenty-five acres of which has to be contiguous. There could be multiple other parcels, but they have to be a minimum of five-acre parcels. And the density called for is ten percent of our existing dwelling units. And so that leaves us at one thousand one hundred and ninety-one capacity, unit capacity within this fifty acres.
And it's, it's my understanding that it, that the legislation, the state legislation doesn't take into account anything that's been built to date in terms of that twelve-hundred number, right? So one of the things I know that I think Peter had talked about and has brought up in the past, you know, and rightfully so, is that, that we've done, there's been a lot of building in the last couple of years here in North Andover. And, and I know he submitted and we put in the packet for everyone to look at, just some of the numbers as to what's been kind of built recently in town and where we stand in terms of single-family versus multifamily and things like that. But it, it's fair to say that the state legislation does not take into account anything that's either built or in the pipeline or anything like that, correct?
No, it's simply the dwelling units at the time of this legislation, which in North Andover was eleven thousand one hundred and ninety-one. So it's a ten percent yield that we need to provide. However, it also doesn't preclude, people have asked, can you put the overlay over dense housing that exists today? And you can. I mean, they're, they've stated that. We're creating zoning. We're not constructing units at this time, but we're creating zoning for potential construction in the future.
So, and that's, I mean, and since I wasn't at the meeting, I'll just share some of my thoughts about, about that. And then we can talk about some different areas and look at some different areas and evaluate them. But when I'm looking at this, what I'm thinking is, we have done a good amount of development in terms of multifamily in the last couple of years. Personally, I think we definitely have room for more. I mean, that was the whole Royal Crest. I think we, there's definitely the need. I mean, I think you heard from the Planning Commission about the need for housing and the lack of, of housing. We've heard from the governor and the lieutenant governor. housing. We've heard from the Governor and the Lieutenant Governor about how short our housing stock is in the entire state, and especially the eastern region. So I think, although we've done a lot here, there is still the need, I'll say globally, meaning in, in the entire area. But what I think we need to be looking at is not necessarily what will be built tomorrow, or next year, or five years, but where are the best places where ten years from now, fifteen years from now, as we grow, as we see these other developments come online and people come in, where would be these places? And that's why I, I really like the Market Basket Plaza. It's, it's not something that would be built overnight, it just, it just wouldn't. But it does have the potential in the future. Sutton Street, same thing. You know, you may need to combine lots and things like that. So it will take time, and that's okay. And in fact, I think as part of this kind of planning, I think that's good. That's what we should be looking for. With the places that we've already built, the Mills, Avalon, those types of places, I worry about making it by right under this legislation, because we worked so hard to set limits and set the appropriate, like, it just seems unfair, or it just doesn't feel right to, like, say Avalon, we spent a year to two years coming to with the exact number of units we wanted to get to there, like, not two-fifty, not two-hundred, like, one-eighty, and then to just now put, you can do it by right. Because then, it, that just doesn't seem right to that neighborhood if, if we were so strict to then make it by right, even though I really like by-right housing in the downtown. I don't think it should be as an overlay of somewhere where we already have master plan zoning. That doesn't feel right to me. So I'd rather do it in places where we can look to grow. Those were my thoughts that I would have shared had I been at the other meeting. So, why don't we take a look at some of these other locations in town, and talk about pluses, minuses, why people may have thought good or bad?
Just, I just want to introduce a little bit of context, and I think that we should go through it, is that we're talking about two or three, I think, related concepts and goals here, okay? And one of them is that we basically have to comply with the state law. We have no choice. So, and that's sort of one circle. Then we have our broad public policy goals, which I think you articulated well at the beginning, is the general need for open housing. And that is another circle. And potentially, it could match the first one exactly, or be completely separate from it. And then the third is, what do we want for this town in specific places? And does this type of zoning, is that the right solution to that, or is there another approach to that? So I think you got to look at all those builders, because, you know, it's easy to comply with this state law. You just pick fifty acres someplace and do it. But it's also, we're not trying to establish a fifty-acre zone where we want to see housing tomorrow, too. So I think we got to balance all those things.
Yeah, to find that Venn diagram. Can I ask a question about that? So let's say we zone, let's say, Market Basket now to have this by right under this law. Does that mean we can't change the zoning there in the future?
No, this, I, I'd envision this as an overlay district, so they'd maintain their underlying, and they can always do a zoning amendment to change the underlying. In terms of the overlay to do a zoning amendment, it couldn't bring us out of compliance, I would think.
Well, that, that's what I'm asking, right? If you make, if you make it by right, but then you want to do something else there as well, and it's, so you still have it by right, but you have an overlay that allows them to build a stadium, you know, I'm just something, I'm just being something ridiculous, but something, you know, build something, and then they build that, and you can't, you know, there would be no feasibility for housing there. You're still technically in compliance, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So, I mean, I mean, that's another good thing, is, is if we can do it places that have multiple opportunities, right? So this is a place that could be for housing, but if something else came up, and we wanted to build a school there, or we wanted to do something else there, you still could and be in compliance.
You still could amend the underlying.
Right.
And if Andrew's still in the room, I mean, if you think differently, Andrew, please.
Yeah, can you hear me, Gene?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Now, I was going to say, to, to that point, to the chair's point, I think both Market Basket and Osgood Landing, in my view, represent opportunities like that, where any number of things could be happening. Osgood Landing, obviously, right now, is, is a commercial industrial property, and they could continue to go on as that for the foreseeable future. And if they redevelop the property, the, the front portion of the property, they could end up, you know, being another type of commercial industrial user as opposed to housing, or they can do mixed use. So it doesn't have to all be, even if we were to implement this zoning in Osgood Landing, they don't have to take advantage of the full amount of by-right housing that it could allow for. They could utilize a portion of the site to do that, and the rest of the site could be some form of a commercial development. And I would say the same thing about Market Basket. I, we've discussed it before, we, I don't think anybody realistically envisions Market Basket itself, at least, going anywhere. Even if they decide to renovate the store, I, you know, they could end up, you know, building a brand-new flagship store for themselves there, and they could add housing to that campus, and there could still be commercial there. But there's just so many different opportunities and iterations of what could actually happen. And I don't think any of it precludes us from, you know, being in compliance if we choose to utilize those properties for MBTA compliance.
I mean, I think, to John's point, I think, I think you're right. I think we just, it's easy to do, we just don't want to make a big, I, I think we don't want to make a big mistake. That's, that's like he is not making a mistake.
I mean, part of the reason why I mention it is, you have to thread the needle for town meeting, given the, the sentiment, it's very mixed in town, is you, you want to be careful that in the end, you pick places that are not wildly contentious. And that's, you know, some of it. And, you know, you can make the argument that some locations, like Market Basket or Osgood Landing, are probably, from that point of view, better, because they tend to be isolated from, you know, they're, they're on public highways and good access, but they're not close to other residential.
Right, so I mean.
Makes it easier.
For me, you know, I'm someone that is more for allowing more in the downtown, right? Like, I, I, for our downtown zoning, I would be more aggressive with lower setbacks and more things allowed by right. But I don't think this is the right type of place for that. I think you have to have a more, I think this needs consensus. And something like that, where you're being more, I don't want to say progressive, but, but really making bigger changes that may come across as, as controversial. I, I don't think that's what we want. I, so I agree. I think we want these forward-looking places that will be good for development of the town in the future, but are not really, you know, immediately adjacent to, you know, big neighborhoods and things like that. So I think, but we, at the same time, still spurring growth. Gene, and are we, so we're making, or Andrew, since you're right here, too, by-right housing, but we can add to that, right? So we can add, you know, so the way I think, I look at the Market Basket Plaza, right, find Market Basket's there. But some of those department stores, I mean, department stores are struggling as it is. You know, small offices are struggling as it is. So can you do things where you do bonuses for, you know, commercial on the first floor and residential above, or mixed use, or, or density? Are there things we can do on top of just straight housing, you know?
That's exactly my point. It's that we want to tailor it to our specific needs and not just comply with the state law.
Yes. Yeah. So I just want to make sure that those are things that we can do, that we can tailor it to add things that we want. So we can have the base, right? The base has to be, we have to have the acreage and the by-right and stuff like that. But can we add on top of it to make it more beneficial for, for what, where we'd like, as a planning department to go?
Gene, I can answer my, oh, go ahead, Gene, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
I was going to say, the way I see it, and correct me if you interpret it differently, Gene, would be that I think at a minimum, you have to provide for the fifteen-unit-per-acre requirement that the state lays out. And then, yeah, you could say, so you have to be able to provide an opportunity for a developer to say, we're going to provide fifteen units-per-acre by right with no commercial.
Right, no strings attached. You can do that. You can build it.
That's, that's the, that's the general principle of the, how to comply with this. But of course, you can, you can lay out in your zoning that it's, that it's encouraged to have first-floor commercial, and, but you still have to allow for that fifteen-unit-per-acre density. And the reality is, they may want, you know, to do more than that, if they were going to put in commercial in order to be able to make everything pencil out.
And so if you were going to be more dense, you could do it by special permit or something like that?
Correct. You can add special permit parameters.
So to use the Market Basket as kind of the illustrative example, so, under the current zoning, and if we, I'm just looking at the map right now, which is, which one's Market Basket, is it B4? So I guess my question is, is that if, if we did an overlay on Market Basket with the current zoning, and they went for a permit, they wouldn't be able to do completely mixed use? Like, they would have to come back to, or we'd have to develop a, like, change the underlying district?
Well, it depends what uses they want to combine the housing with. If it's one that's already allowed, they could do it. But if it's not allowed, then...
Then they can. Got it.
Yeah, so they're B3 right now.
Right, so as part of this, we could amend that zoning there to allow for other types of uses, and not, aren't necessarily in B3 right now, if we wanted to.
Yeah. I mean, we, I think we should.
If you want to encourage things.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's definitely, I mean, John, you might have touched upon this, as well, is that I think we just, if we're going to do an overlay on, like, again, using Market Basket as the illustrative examples, then I think we'd need to look at the underlying and the overlying, to see whether or not they're actually compatible with one another, right? Because we, what we don't want, I think, is a, someone pulling a permit fif, like, fifteen units-per-acre by right, and it looks, and it's just, it just doesn't jive with, you know, either the master plan, or, you know, or they're really limited on the, I guess, on the development side, and what would you do on, like, either mixed use, or, to your point, the first-floor commercial?
Yeah, I mean, there are things, there are definitely things to be considered, like, Market Basket, right? If you did that, and they took out all that commercial space and just replaced it with residential, that's not necessarily the best thing for the town, because then we're losing a lot of tax revenue and stuff like that. So you may want to allow this, but you really would want to encourage some of that commercial to stay, so that we're getting a net positive, not necessarily negative. Even, I mean, housing itself is, has positive values, but, you know, getting mixed use there would be better than, I think, than just residential, you know, things like that. Those are the things we have to weigh out.
Just on the unit density side, we, we discussed this at the meeting, and, you know, something to point out is, it's very unlikely we'd see a fifteen-unit-per-acre development actually come through. That there's, I mean, as demonstrated by all the projects you guys have approved recently, and that have been built in town recently, they're all above fifteen units-per-acre, which kind of demonstrates to me, there's really not a lot of economic feasibility behind a project of that density level. It just, it's just a reality. That could change, but...
But you could go higher than that by special permit.
Correct, yes, absolutely. Yeah, but I, I would venture to guess that ninety-nine out of a hundred times, the developer's going to go the special permit route to get those additional units.
Right, so, so even if we do it where we do it, it's still unlikely that they'd go for it just on that, on the base, and we'd wind up with special permit applications anyway.
That's correct.
Okay, well, that's good to know. Okay, so do we want to talk about some other locations?
Yeah, if I can start with, I want to get at the, sort of the, you could call it the cynical approach to it. You, you zone a property, but Gene, and this is, you may know the answer to this the best, is if you took, for an example, the forty-B out on Sharpers, on Tarbike Street by Sharpers Pond Road, and zone that as part of the district, are you technically allowed to do that? I'm not suggesting we do it, but I'm just saying, technically, under the way the thing is set up, would that be allowable?
To overlay over a forty-B?
Yeah, or, yeah.
It, it hasn't been specifically excluded as an option, so.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand the, you know, if, if you were looking at property that's already built, are there any restrictions or limitations on that, just?
No, you could put the overlay over any parcels in town, whether they're already dense housing that was constructed last year. It, it allows you to do it. It's just, the state ultimately is going to have to approve this, as well as town meeting. And so we just want to make sure that if we were to do something like that, we definitely, before town meeting, have them weigh in on it.
Fair enough, fair enough. Just to...
I mean, it's a good question. I just worry about someone being like, yes, you're in compliance, and, oh, you've applied for this optional grant. Well, you know, I mean, I mean, I worry about that, you know?
I'm not suggesting we do, I'm just trying to figure out whether, because some towns are going to do that, you know?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Yeah, I, I mean, the, that's an interesting one about a forty-B. I hadn't really thought about that. Because that's, that's an interesting question, but from what I read, nothing prevents you from doing that. But again, you're probably not winning any friends at the State House, or at DHCD, than when we do need something, you know? That doesn't hurt you.
Do, do we have a short list, I guess, a poll that you guys have, on what properties we don't want to do an overlay on, like, big parcels, like, we think would be very contentious at?
Gene, Andrew, were there places that you guys considered, and then said, it's probably not the best? Like, what are some other places that were considered?
Royal Crest?
Yeah.
Right, so Royal, right.
I mean, it doesn't check the boxes of having transportation. It's somewhat in a commercial area, but you're walking along Route 125, 114 to get to them. We already have a sense of the neighborhood, based on the redevelopment discussions we've had over the last couple of years. And, and you're much more in a neighborhood. It's also seventy-six acres, and so you'd, you'd really be limited to, that would cover all the density metrics in itself.
I mean, the interesting part there, though, is that...
It's all residential.
Well, they wouldn't want to do it, right? Like, to your point, like, if you zoned it at seventy-six acres, at fifteen units-per-acre, they're not going to want to do that.
Not at that density, no.
No, I mean, at that density, it's not, it's not practical at all for them to do it.
Do we know what, how many units-per-acre that they're at right now?
Gene, you have that seared into your mind, don't you?
Five eighty-eight.
I don't remember what's there today, but the Trinity proposal was seventeen units-per-acre.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I mean, I, sort of like, I, I sort of did a crack mentally of it, and the approach I took is, I first said, okay, I'm going to look at everything along 125, and then I'm going to look at everything along 114, and then I'm going to look at other things that are sort of close in that area. But I wasn't going to go out to, like, stuff on the edge of town that was in a residential R1 district that's miles away from everything, because that doesn't meet the requirements. And, I mean, you, you think about it, you could kind of mentally go up 125 from, you know, it basically starts with Osgood Landing, but then when you get past that, you get to the places where, you know, all that industrial area between there and really Princeton Properties. I mean, that's really what you're talking about. There, you know, we, we tried rezoning that stuff once for the strip joint. That didn't work out so well. But, you know, I mean, hypothetically speaking, you could pick all that industrial area and put the district there if you wanted to. I mean, not suggesting we do, but you could.
Just on that specifically, so my observation is, you know, Osgood Landing and the Market Basket are obviously commercial industrial properties right now. And so if you were to replace those, those properties completely with housing, that would be problematic tax-wise. But, A, as we've discussed, I don't envision, like, a, a Market Basket going completely residential. You know, Market Basket's going to be there in some form or fashion, and I assume they'd want some more retail there as well, but something, you know, redeveloped from what they have now. And Osgood Landing, I, I think there's opportunity there to do kind of a mixed-use scenario, not just completely housing, especially since it's already on Route 125 in front of Amazon. But if you look at those industrial parcels off Holt Road, for instance, which I think is what you were just referring to, John, it's kind of a binary scenario, and that's, you know what I mean? Those parcels are either going to be housing, or they're going to be industrial. So you're kind of foregoing the tax revenue So you're kind of foregoing the tax revenue 100% of what you're going to get from going, you're going to convert from, you know. $17.25 per thousand square feet to, or, or, you know, thousand, whatever it is, $1,000 assessed to $12.24 for residential. So it's a big difference and something to think about.
Is there any impact on the properties if we rezone it appraisal wise and just put an overlay, does that have any effect on the?
Can't imagine it would, just because it would be an overlay, so you'd still have access to the original zoning. So they can still do everything they would have done today.
Yeah, I just never thought of it.
They could just opt to go another way, if anything, it could enhance the property value because you have more optionality.
You have more options, right. Okay. Chris, do you have any thought, I mean, Chris, I know you've, you've done a lot of real estate and development and things like, any thoughts on where would be good places?
Two, one question, one thought. The first is two of these three recommended sites, I believe, satisfy the state's requirement, so we just need to basically pick two. Obviously, we're exploring, you know, possible other options. The one item is that I do like the idea of a commercial, keeping a commercial component of mixed use with the housing as opposed to straight housing. So that's, I think, the Oscon and Market Basket sites do fit what I believe would be a goal. That being said, if we're looking at true revitalization of downtown, then we take a harder look at Sutton Street. But on your point, is this the avenue which drives that development or that revitalization? So that's just, that's just an overall question observation.
John, do you think Sutton Street would be more controversial?
Absolutely, I mean, I, I think Sutton Street in some respects is a more logical opportunity to do something really interesting over the next five, 10 years. But I'm not sure this is the way to go for that, which is my point, and the reason primarily is that when you get on the far side of Sutton Street where the river is. There's a lot of houses there, and those people are going to go crazy. And the people further up Sutton Street, on both sides of the street are going to go crazy about it. And that's why, I'm just a little bit, I could see a lot of blowback on Sutton Street.
Andrew, Gene, can we, if we did Oscon and Market Basket, would that be enough? Would we have the acreage and the density?
Yes.
Yes.
Any two, any two of those scenarios could be enough.
So the thing I, I think about with Sutton Street, to, to, to Chris and John, your point is that I think it is a great opportunity there, I think that it's so underused, undervalued. Would be such a great addition to renovate and, and make to the downtown, but I think it needs a plan. Where like these other places, like Market Basket is going to know what they're doing, and they're going to come up with a plan that's going to really, and same with Oscon, they're going to come up with a plan. This needs, this needs joint ownership and it needs a lot more attention to make it, to make it work.
But I mean, it's a little bit, obviously, there's, there's a part of these, I think all three of them, and, you know, and actually, all three of them are primarily owned by a single person. I mean, Sutton's a little different, but the largest piece is owned by, but I mean, I think going out and, I don't know if you've been in much dialogue with those three parties, but I mean, we obviously, as part of this, should do that if we have it. And, you know, you just don't know what's on their mind and, and, you know, ultimately, if we go forward and want to rezone one of the properties even with an overlay, and they don't understand that, they're not going to be happy about it, so we need to do it anyway, so.
It does seem like Sutton Street would be. A massive piecemeal to get that all together as opposed to the two other sites. There's a lot of different parcels, a lot of different owners, I have my office down there on 231 Sutton, which is all office condos, and then that big office condo building, you have 30 or 40 different owners. So I don't necessarily know if even dropping the overlay on Sutton would ever come to full fruition on certain parts of it, I guess.
Yeah, that's a, I didn't realize there was office condos there.
Yeah.
Clearly makes it more complicated.
For sure.
Yep.
So Andrew, Andrew, if you bring up the map again.
Yeah, do you, do you see the, I have Sutton Street pulled up on my map, do you see it?
If you can zoom in a little on that.
Sure.
So the Sutton Street, Oscon Landing gets us 58 acres of developable land. Sutton Street, what I had shown you previously, kind of stretched that whole way, we could certainly cut that back. And so this is what I described as a very underutilized parcel, it's 200 Sutton Street and Bueno Bistros to the right. If we were to just do those two, we accumulate just over five acres. And so we likely could still hit. The 15 unit per acre at both Oscon Landing and here, we'd still have 50 in total, 25 of which is contiguous at Oscon Landing. This would comply with the, the other one has to be at least five acres of contiguous. And. That way, we're landing much closer to the 50 acre requirement and can still get 15 units per acre and total 1,200. The vast majority of which obviously would be at Oscon Landing. So, so the split would be roughly like 900 units there and 300 units here probably.
300, 300 here?
Yeah.
Seems like a lot.
Yeah, I, I still, I.
We're at 400, if I remember correctly, it might, might require a parcel across the way too, I think I had 231 in as well, which is the 18 condo units. But we can, we can look at narrowing Sutton Street, if you think it's important to at least get a little bit there, we can look to narrow that scope down to more realistic type parcels. That can get us the yield, again, combined with either Oscon Landing or Market Basket, whichever one you felt stronger about.
Okay, that, that's helpful, is there, let's, when we do this zoning and say it's by right, are there still height requirements or is it, is there, or is it just the underlying height requirement in the district?
So there could still be height requirements, and again, you could allow for three stories, which the downtown overlay exists today.
And that'll still get you.
Four by special permit.
Okay.
You can, you can cap the units per parcel at, you know, maybe 40 units max or 60 by special permit. Like, we can be creative, we just have to make sure that the initial density capacity requirements are met without a special permit.
Okay. Okay, yeah, good.
I, I sort of understand that there is an, an issue around sort of actually realizing this at town meeting. You know, I think personally. You know, if you're really thinking about where, if you're in the spirit of sort of what is a MBTA community, right? Something that's walkable, where you can get to amenities, you know. Looking very long term, if you're trying to encourage mixed use development, you're creating something like that, but I don't know that either of those two other parcels are actually all that walkable. Or, you know. Providing a, a place where people want to live. I. I personally would like to look a little closer at Sutton Street, and then I also wouldn't be opposed if we were looking at something like Sutton Street to including, like Sutton Pond in there. In, with some recognition of the development that has already taken place. And, you know, to your point that you kind of held them to this higher standard. You know, I would say they, they also are a lot denser than what would be offered by right in that zone. I, I wonder if we can also play with the boundary of, of that Sutton Street, those Sutton Street parcels to include, for example, Sutton Pond and then those two larger parcels.
Yeah, I think your point is well taken, I think what you, what you suggested, I think the really key thing that you said was that from a general public policy point of view, having a thriving walking downtown is an important thing. My point is that this zoning district may not be the way to get there from here for that use, because. That is, first of all, you don't know based on all the landowners and so forth, what is going to work and what people will accept. But I think honestly, if, if we go for a lot of that parcel, that's the thing that will blow this up at town meeting. It really will, there's too many people in single family houses that live too close to that. And so you got to try, if you want to do something there, I think you have to try a little bit different approach. Which I'm not suggesting we don't, because I think it's important, but I think it's, it's something, whether this zoning thing had come up or not with the state. We should be doing something down there anyway, and it's, may not be the same thing.
So is Sutton, how much, is Sutton Street or any of it part of the, what we're looking at, the downtown housing. Zoning that, that they're looking at, the rezoning downtown? So where we've had the, the work, the consultant and looking at the downtown zoning, I mean, is Sutton Street part of that?
It, it has been, yes, Gene, I don't know if you want to speak more to that, but I mean, basically. You know, we're kind of a little bit of a, at a. Standstill with that until we kind of understand what we're doing with MBTA communities.
No, right, so, but my point is to John is that we are looking.
Yes.
At this area already in a separate context for downtown zoning, so like, these same things, we're talking about them, but I think I disagree. That may be the area where we have to attack the Sutton Street and how to revitalize and, and work it. It may be better in the downtown, downtown zoning, rezoning and redistricting rather than as part of the house, of the MBTA communities. I would just say, Market Basket, I think, is pretty walkable, I mean, there are apartments right across, there are already a decent amount in, they're technically in Lawrence. But there are going up to where the Boston Market is and behind the Boston Market, there are actually a good amount of apartments, and the bus already goes there. So like every time I go to Market Basket, I see the bus there, so.
With nobody on it.
It's there, so that, I, I think that is more. In line than, than say, Oscon.
Yeah, I would say, just to address some of what Chema was saying, and I agree with most of what she had to say, pretty much all of it, I mean, I, I think that downtowns are what the state was envisioning as areas where. You know, towns and municipalities could capitalize and see more housing produced in because of the walkability of them, because of the fact that downtowns are typically closer to transit. And. You know, even in this case, we're, we're not that far from a Lawrence MBTA station. But with all that said, I do think that Market Basket and. Oscon Landing, while they're both sort of more. You know, they're not dense urban areas, so to speak, but they are along transit roads, routes. Both are approximate to the highway, both are approximate to employers. I think there is something to be said for encouraging some level of housing development in those, in those areas, that it can be beneficial overall to the housing issue that we're, we're dealing with. But just the last thing I'll say about Sutton Street is. You know, another thing that Gene and I work on a lot is sort of the general redevelopment of downtown, something I can't stress enough as someone who's worked in economic development for a while. The thing that's really ultimately going to help the downtown is if there's more people living there, that's just, it is what it is.
And have you noticed from, you know, Avalon is sort of full at this point. Has that had any effect, noticeable effect?
You know, I mean, I can't say that it has insofar as obviously there hasn't been like this influx of new, you know, retail establishments, for instance, you know, there, I think there's that new bagel shop that opened where Fabiano's was, but I don't know that they're there just because Avalon came in. The question would be, you'd have to put it, or someone would have to put it to some of the store owners, have they seen maybe an uptick in business downtown? Have restaurants seen more business recently, it's possible. But I do think there is, you know, a transition period that has to happen, I don't think it's a light switch, and we'll have to see, I think. You know, I'm, I don't want to speak for them, but I'm sure the folks that did the redevelopment at. The project at, on Main Street at Santander, I mean, I'm sure they were looking at the overall trajectory of what was going on in the area, and they noticed the Avalon project is, is a project they would have noticed. And I'm sure, you know, part of the calculus they did to decide whether or not to invest was that project happening.
Could, could, sort of tangentially, could we sometime get someone from, I don't know, maybe the Merchants Association or something like that, to like talk about downtown and our downtown plans and just how some of this development that we've done has. If there have been effects that have been noticed, I mean, I think that would be a nice topic, just to kind of dovetail into this a little bit, but I think that would be something just for a future meeting, that would be nice to have someone talk about, like. Yeah, we, because we always talk about what are the traffic effects and what are the school effects, but some of these actual downtown effects on businesses would be nice, and I think the Merchants Association would be something. I mean, I have seen, it does seem like the farmer's market is doing well, I've seen, you know, Golden Seal reopen their, you know, soda fountain. I tried to get bagels at nine o'clock and they were sold out at the Bagel Cafe, I don't know, it's just because it's new. But it seems like there are these little hints of things, but it would be maybe if we could get someone to kind of come in and talk about that.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the overall point though is, it cannot possibly hurt any of the downtown businesses to have 170 units of market rate residential. And all the people that live there, and frankly, and we've talked about this, and this is also part of the problem, they're, they're, they're supporting higher rents there, but as far as the business is concerned, those are people that have probably more disposable income to spend at downtown shops and restaurants. So I'd like to think that it's going to make, in the long run, you know, a positive effect.
That's, that's the argument I have every time someone comes up with and says, what are the benefits? I mean, I think we literally had this conversation when we had the Santander, what are the benefits of having this housing downtown, and we had that conversation, so. I have a question for, that probably should be related to town council, is that it would seem by right, multifamily housing would fall under the Housing Choice Act and be a 50% quantum of vote. But if we're adding special permits to that same zoning, does that make it a two thirds quantum of vote? So.
Or would they be separate?
Or would they be separate, right, yeah.
Good question, yeah.
And is that something we should craft separately, as in separate, separate overlays or something like that? Just, 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 just something I want to ask.
Yeah, good question.
Okay. Is there anything else we need to talk about, or what's next, or is there anything we should be doing? Gene?
So, is there any preference on the areas?
Well, I, I mean. I think there's a chicken and egg, I have my preferences, I think at this point, I don't think it's totally ripe, it's, I think Market Basket and Oscon Landing are the two that we should pick. And I think we should look at Sutton Street, but from a totally different lens, I think it's from the lens of total downtown development. But I think we would, we would satisfy fairly the state compliance with the state law in a way that we're not gaming the system at all if we picked those two, and I. And those would be the ones that I would recommend.
John, what do you think?
I'm in line with John, I think the, the opportunities of having kind of potential gateway opportunities, I think is pretty intriguing. My only question is, is that, I was just thinking ahead of the town meeting, is, is that with respect to Oscon Landing, given that they have the 40R overlay and they were to add a 15 unit per acre overlay, what's the. Is there, is there a net gain on the 15 unit, or is it same same with the, with the 40R, you see what I'm saying, like, I just don't know.
The 40, the 40R allows for 20 units per acre, but it has also a lot of other dimensional criteria too, but specifically for per acre, it's 20.
So they could choose.
Yeah, so it's not, it's not a huge pitch for us with respect to Oscon, given that's already there, so really the pitch is Market Basket. At the end of the day.
Well, I do, I, go ahead, Gene, go ahead.
But again, the difference in the 40R is that was envisioned to have three different sub-districts. And so residential was only allowed in a residential mixed use and a mixed use area. It wasn't, there was another area that was going to be 100% commercial. So this zoning would allow across the entire 58 acres residential at 15 units per acre.
Got it.
Chema, what do you think?
So, well, first, I, I want to understand, are we encouraging Market Basket to redevelop? It sounds like there's not a whole lot of.
I don't think so, I mean, I don't know if we've, have anyone talked to Market Basket or anything like that? No, I mean, I agree with John, I think we should, I don't think this. I don't think this changes their plans at all. It is just my thought, but.
I think all it says is, I think all it says is, is if you decide at some point in the future to redevelop, here's another tool in your toolbox that you can potentially, you capitalize on it, that's what you want to do.
So I have, I have actually a general historical question, so when was that plaza developed originally? Does anyone know?
What was the when?
When, when was the Market Basket Plaza developed originally?
I would guess in the 60s, but that's really a guess.
I thought we built right around 1495. Probably built right around when four ninety-five was built, right?
See, Jean was born in the eighties, so she doesn't know the answer to that question.
I remember what Karen's talking about.
Because four ninety-five was built around nineteen sixty-five, right, Jean?
One ninety-five, right around then, yep.
Yeah, so it was probably right about the same.
Got it.
I mean, I, I don't think it necessarily, I don't think either of these necessarily encourage, I think neither of them encourage immediate changes to anything. I think they're more long-term, based on where we think things may go in the future, like predictions of where the need and the ability may come. I think it's more us projecting, okay, five to ten years from now, I don't know if Kohl's is going to still exist as a retail store or if that area is going to support a retail store. And if that's not there, what else are they going to do, right? Make a giant new Market Basket, or like add standalone stores, or could they add? It just seems like a reasonable place where it could happen, I think more. But I do think we should talk to them and talk to Osgood and get, get feedback on that.
And I mean, you know, to the earlier discussion about density and the, sort of the economic feasibility of fifteen units per acre, these, you know, the owners of these parcels, these properties are going to have to still go for that special, special permit, more, you know, discretionary process to game out a scenario where they're actually, you know, doing something that's feasible for them in terms of redevelopment.
And I think we could develop this in the way, so usually like our zoning is like sticks, like, don't do this, don't do this, you can't do this. This could be more like a carrot of how we want it to be developed. Okay, yes, you can do by right, but what we really want is mixed use. And so we're going to allow this, this, this by special permit to, to make them actually think about it, to make them actually be like, ooh, I could do that. That might, you know, those, and maybe because, I don't know if you, as someone who does kind of that kind of, some small real estate development, like, what kind of, it would be good to have what kind of carrots we could put in there to say, hey, maybe this is something where we could consider putting housing. I think it's, I think it's a way of encouraging it in locations. I, for me, I would say, I would love housing on Sutton Street. I would love mixed use there. I mean, I think, again, you take the, the Bueno Bistro and then where that goes back into the, to the tailor shop and the ninja gym and stuff like that. I mean, I see no reason why we couldn't put housing on top of those things or make, that would be a great location for housing. And I'm always for more housing downtown, but we need to get this done. And I think that adds a hurdle that may be a bridge too far. So that I, I think, I think we do it as part of a aggressive downtown rezoning. That's how I would do it. I would do it separate.
Agreed.
And I think we still can go for more, frankly, I think we could even go for more as part of a downtown rezoning. But it would have to, it would be specific to downtown and marketed towards downtown. Because otherwise, we're just going to get lost talking about this and not talking about the other stuff. Just after like the last six years of battles at town meeting, like, I don't know if it's just being road weary from that. It, it, we need something that's going to pass without too much problems.
Yeah, I, I agree one hundred percent with you on that. I do, something needs to give on Sutton Street. Having control over that and guiding it not with this vehicle would probably be in our best interest. Going to town meeting with Osgood and Market Basket seems like it would be the path of least resistance, considering, you know, some people might have building fatigue with what's going on with Avalon or the top of Sutton Street with Menko. So with just this specific requirement from the state, I, you know, I agree with you on those two sites. That being said, Market Basket, you know, their primary business is their grocery chain, a very successful one at that. Do they do development? Yes. Would they go to maximize their site? One hundred percent, yes. They wouldn't stick to the fifteen units per acre. They would come in with something more, more dense, more of a mixed-use concept. So I think that would be ultimately a good goal to have down there for them to have in their pocket also.
Have we seen Market Basket do this elsewhere?
Woburn, I think I heard. Woburn has a version of a mixed-use redevelopment.
Yeah, they did something pretty large in New Hampshire. I forget what towns it was, but they did, like a full-on housing, retail. I can, I can dig it up.
I know they like to own like all the property in, in the plazas that they have.
Yeah.
But again, you know, we see it with, we see the dynamics changing with like Eagle Plaza, the dynamic of changing of like the retail stores going and restaurants coming in. And again, that, I mean, now Bollywood Grill is there. And I think a bookstore is coming in in the fall, which, which is awesome. I'll probably be there all the time. But different, it's changing. And so I think we just need to encourage it to change in the, the way we want to see it. That's, I mean, that's what, I mean, frankly, I think that's the most important job of the planning board is to, to try to encourage planning. This is, I think this is our opportunity to do that at these kind of key locations. So Gene, does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, so what happens next?
So we're working with Member Vali Quinn to engage with the public in September. So probably the week after school goes back to try to get some community input, kind of education as well as feedback. And then we move towards really fine-tuning the modeling to make sure that we're landing where we should be. Hopefully, we can get something to the state by the end of December so that they can review it and make sure that we're aligned with their thoughts before heading to Warren Annika's.
So, and so ultimately, does it become a planning board-sponsored zoning amendment?
Yes.
And we do our public hearings and all that stuff?
Yep.
Gene, can I interject with a question to the planning board?
Yeah.
So, so based on this conversation, so as Gene said, we want to go to the public. We want to get a little feedback from the broader general public. Should we be just basically presenting just Osgood and Market Basket? Or should we even be talking, should we not even be raising the issue of Sutton Street? Should we be throwing other things out there? Or are we sort of like, based on this conversation, do you feel as though the best route to go is say, you know, fine-tuning what the numbers would be and the exact, you know, shape of the districts would be for those two districts? Those two areas?
I mean, my initial thought is some history is good to start of, hey, we looked all around town. And, you know, we went to the select board, we went to the planning board, we talked about these different things. We talked about different areas, we talked about Holt Road, we talked about different things. And this is ultimately was the broadest consensus, but we'd still be open to hearing other ideas. I mean, I think, I don't think we can go and say, these are the only two options.
Yeah.
But these are the, I think we can say that these are the consensus favorites. But we're still open to other ideas and, and questions and, you know, about other places. That's my thought, I don't know.
Yeah, what, Andrew, what do you think is the target audience for a conversation?
I think the target audience is whoever wants to come out and listen. So, I mean, we're going to have to do at least one or two, you know, public forum type of events.
Yeah, I mean, I think that part of the sell is, the generic sell is, look, when this is, I hate to use the word, we're being forced to do it, but there's, there's a carrot and stick element, it's a mandate. And you have no choice about it, so you could be smart about it or you could stick your head in the sand. I mean, because I do think that, you know, there's a certain consideration, you have folks that are opposed to all multifamily development under any circumstances and you want to, but I think that's a small group and you want to peel them away from the people that realize hate. Look, we've got to do something. So, I mean, because it's in our best interest to do something. You may not like it, but this is the way the world is. And we thought through it and we think this is what makes sense. I think that's the message we got to deliver.
And making a mistake, that's exactly why we plan to keep MBPC very engaged in this process. Because we don't, we're not trying to, and it isn't this, we're, it's not Gene and I in a planning office somewhere talking about what we're going to do here. It's, look, we're responding to what the state has laid before us. And MBPC is assisting communities throughout our region in this process. So they have some broader regional perspective on how different communities are handling this. So having them as part of that conversation, I think, is going to be helpful in that regard.
So I do think it's twofold, though. I do think it's, one, we like these two locations because of X, Y, and Z. But I think it's also, we considered these other locations. We considered Sutton Street because it's close to downtown and visualization and it has some stuff. But we ultimately didn't go with that because we think that's better suited for a more specific project or we didn't think it would get the most consensus. I think it is important to, to kind of show that there was this deliberation and thoughtfulness of why we may not have gone with certain areas that may be more contentious, you know? I, I don't know. I just think people get upset if you dictate what the answer is. And so I think, I think there just needs to be some talk about why we talk, talk through different things and, and, and may not have gone certain ways. And it may be from different perspectives. Some people may say, but I want Sutton Street, you know? And maybe this is why we chose not to, and some people, oh, I'm glad we didn't do that because I think that's too much, or whatever. I do think we should have at least something about, we talked about Sutton Street, we talked about some places on one twenty-five, we talked about Royal Crest, we talked about Avalon, and there are a lot of different places that we could do this. I think that's important, that there are a lot of different places that we could do this. And we're trying to pick the ones that are best for the whole town and for future planning. I don't know if that's too broad, but that's, I don't know if that helps at all, but that's just what I think, so.
No, that's, that's great.
Okay, so you'll let us know what you need from us and when to be at meetings and who to talk to and things like that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Great.
Gene, are you good?
Yep.
All right, great.
Yeah, good job. Andrew, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, absolutely. Okay, a couple more things. Planning Board election of officers. So we have our annual election of officers. I did get, I did talk to Peter about this, and the one thing he said is he does not want to be chair or vice chair. He is very specific on that, so we should definitely nominate him. No.
So can I be presumptuous to make a motion to nominate you for, uh, chair?
Sure, you can.
I'll second that nomination.
Okay. Do, does anyone, would anyone like to be a vice chair?
I'm going to nominate John.
Okay. Okay, so nomination for myself as chair, John as second vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, okay. All right, that's approved. All right, all right, so that's, meeting minutes. I can get a motion to approve the meeting minutes from July eleventh.
So moved.
Motion made by Sean. Can you second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, anything else before we need to adjourn? Gene, we don't have a meeting next week, correct?
Right, July twenty-fifth. Oh, twenty-fifth, I'm sorry, August fifteenth.
Next week is National Night Out. That's a, we don't do a meeting on that. It's a very fun event.
Awesome event.
Happens at Hayes Stadium, so I would definitely encourage everyone to go to that. Some law enforcement exhibits and some, you know, emergency vehicles and vendors. And it's gotten bigger and bigger every year. It's a really cool event, so I definitely recommend that. I think we talked about some, you know, new, new bagel place in town. I, I think it's good to talk about the things that are developing. So anybody got anything else that's going on in town next couple of weeks? Okay, if you hear of anything or think of anything next time, just let us know. Can we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Gene, enjoy your vacation. When are you, when are you back?